Welcome to The Pulse with Peter B. I'm your host, Peter Biancamano. Let's get you to the pulse on everything you need to know. And today's show is sponsored by the Pilsner House and Beer Garden. Go visit our friends at 1422 Grand Street. Have a beer, have a pretzel, have those ribs, have an awesome time. And we are here tonight at the A.J. Demarest Middle School for our 2022 Hoboken Board of Education election debate. We are going to present to you a short highlight reel since Election Day is this upcoming Tuesday, November 8th. Be sure to go out and vote. But before we get to the festivities, I would like to thank our sponsors for putting tonight's debate on, and that is Il Tavolo di Palazzano, located at 700 Clinton Streets, Madison Pizza Lab, located at 152 Newark Streets, and Placa Su Vlaki, also located at 62 Newark Street. Let's go right inside to the festivities.
Hobokenites are faced with a high cost of living, including taxes, which they pay directly as homeowners or indirectly as renters. If elected, you will control about one-third of the tax bill. How do you plan on keeping school taxes stable?
As the Chair of the Finance Committee, let me please explain what we can and cannot do from a budget/tax perspective. We must raise taxes 2% every year, since we are classified as an S2 district by the state. We cannot cut taxes. We can raise taxes by more than 2% via enrollment and healthcare insurance waivers. We also cannot affect how much dollars go to the charters. Those amounts are determined by the state. Anyone telling you otherwise does not know the facts. The bigger discussion, in my opinion, is about pilots. We, public and charter districts, should be having together a discussion around not only pilots, but state funding. Pilots have a direct impact on facilities, capacity, and money. And sadly, community schools pit community schools against each other. Collectively, we can have a bigger impact. If we work together, the results are better.
The tax issue is real. And just look to Jersey City to see what's going on when you have a BOE that is not paying attention to keeping costs in check. The city tax bill grew 31.5%, including BOE and city taxes in the last two years in Jersey City. That's something many people cannot afford. What we need to do is audit what's going on, find efficiencies where we can, and also look to the vast resources we have in the city. We have professionals, we have empty nesters, we have people from all walks of life who can give of their talent and time to help fill in in places where we don't have enough support.
My thing is, when she said the 2% tax, that's exactly right. The Board of Ed also found a way to get around that. I have been to every meeting, y'all talking to a tax, oh, I mean, I'm sorry, a budget hawk here. People find a way around things. And the first thing they did was blame the government. Well, the government said we have to do this. No, we have to get rid of the local greedy politicians that find a way through things. The school was one way, and it was behind closed doors. They need to be more transparent, put the budget back in the voters' hands, and let us vote on our own budget and not the administration, and we can see where our money is. I'm with in order. Okay, because I've seen greed, and that's where our taxes is being impacted. So, I mean, they may have you fool guys, but tonight, all right, let me wrap it up saying this one thing. But tonight, stop mismanaging our money, and we will control the tax issues.
I will point out that the district, of course, does have an audit every year, and that the Finance Committee does scrub the expenses every year. Our CUSAC scores for management of the district are as high as they've ever been. We do already partner with nonprofits in the community, including the new Stevens University tutoring program. So, much of what is being discussed here by Pavel is already been implemented.
The January referendum to Bob for a $241 billion new high school created a division in the Hoboken community for people who care about children and taxpayers on both sides. How would you help to heal that rift and come up with a plan that works for all stakeholders?
The community spoke loud and clear. They voted, and we were defeated 2 to 1. We need to do more. I need to do more to educate and engage with the entire community. And we've already started that. Dr. Johnson held 14 community roundtables since the referendum discussing the budget, enrollment, facilities, amongst other things. And that's just the beginning. But let me be clear, there is no plan to put out another referendum without any community input.
The community is going to be very important to anything we do. We do have real infrastructure needs. We have aging infrastructure, particularly at Demarest. That is the fulcrum for everything we need to do, fanning on out. We also need to improve academic outcomes for all types of learners. I have the skill set to help with that. I know how to go out into communities and to elicit feedback from them. Again, most of the people who live in this community are not parents. So, in order to get a push for something big and real, we need the entire community behind that. And that also means explaining what we're doing and why, and also what alternatives we've considered and why we haven't gone with those alternatives. Just being transparent and telling people what you're doing instead of doing things in secret goes such a long way to engender trust.
I would say that we're not blind to the fact that we definitely need serious upgrades in our school. We need to update our facilities. We need to be ready for 2022 and beyond in terms of athletic facilities and all of our burgeoning sport offering. But when we talk about enrollment, when you look at the DOE, which is a state authority, and you look at enrollment numbers, the numbers are not trending upwards, they're trending downwards. At best, they're comparatively stable. So, if anything, this gives us the opportunity to come back to the table, to talk together, to figure out and weigh situations on how we can move forward together as a community.
This whole referendum thing is another school and another plan waiting, but don't be surprised either, come November 9th. If you look at the endorsement, and we look at social media and see the mayor and his whole clique, this whole little clique right here, there's pushing it, oh, we gonna be sorry, put the referendum behind us. You can't trust a liar. You gotta earn faith, you gotta earn trust. You gotta earn it back. There's no way we got an incumbent sitting on the stage tonight and bowl enough to run again, because they can. When you have that much power and control, stop letting them throw all of these little trinkets up here on this stage to distract you guys. It's all dirty politics. That's why I said I voted no, I voted yes. I didn't vote neither one. I waited till Election Day, stood on city hall stairs at 6:00 in the morning and said, I vote hell no.
I voted yes because of the dire need for capital improvements to school facilities, and the fact that the last successful school bond referendum in town was back in 1989. I was surprised and disappointed that a referendum was announced after the last November elections, especially due to the cost of project and the short amount of time until the vote. The referendum process wasn't sufficient. I believe that BOE should do a much better job engaging the community all along and being transparent in the process. My business is all about full disclosure and not omitting any material facts.
All right, folks, I hope you're having fun at the only 2022 Hoboken Board of Education election debate. We have more coming up after this quick commercial break.
Welcome to Hudson River Care and Counseling. Hello, I'm Dr. Pam Peter Ennis, the CEO and founder of Hudson River Care and Counseling with over 30 years of clinical, social work experience and therapy. We are a progressive counseling and coaching practice with a diverse team that brings a holistic approach to clients. We offer support both in person and through digital platforms such as telehealth. Consider us a safe haven that you can trust with care for your mental health needs. Visit our website to set up a consultation today.
Peter Biancamano, your hostess with the mostest of The Pulse with Peter B. Folks, don't forget to go on our Facebook and our Instagram pages by searching The Pulse with Peter B. And like and follow us on each of those platforms. We're constantly updating those pages with previews of each week's segments and cool stories. Also, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to our email address at thepulsewithpeterb@gmail.com. Today's show is brought to you by Vote Kids First on Tuesday, November 8th, for Hoboken Board of Education. Together, we're putting Hobokans kids first.
Since 2012, the Hoboken BOE has not taken its budgets of public referendum, and the public has seen an increase in their school taxes almost every year since. If elected, will you support holding referendums on Board of Education budgets? Why or why not? And do you have any other ideas to increase public participation on the budget?
I think we need really publicize and let people know, this is happening, this is real. The coronavirus grant money that we used to plug this year's budget, which I asked about, is gone. Another half million of state aid under this administration is gone. We need to let the people know that their voices matter, that their opinions matter, and that what this Board of Ed decides oftentimes is the difference between how much you can buy groceries and if you can afford rent.
The more sunlight around our budget, the better. The more people know what is in the budget and why, the better. The more people who are educated, the better. The BOE is here to educate our children. They're also here, part of their remit is responsibility to the taxpayers. So, of course, we want to do that. Now, the way I understand it is if we go past the 2% cap, then it does have to go to a referendum. So, hopefully, that will not be the case, that we have to go past the 2% cap, and that we will, as BOE trustees, be more transparent about what is in the budget, so everybody in the city can feel comfortable with where their tax money is going.
We have run on our slate that we believe in transparency, and that includes not only posted financials, but also the live streaming of meetings. But there is another element here. You are evaluating us to represent you in terms of the district, and that means that you are guaranteeing a group of people to go and look and professionally look, and as Mr. Delatorre said, audit our budget. Everyone here has the opportunity, it's the first Tuesday of every month, to come to speak to the board, to ask questions of the board, and to look at the agenda regarding the financials. One area where I'm going to agree with Ms. Waiters is that we still have S2 students in this district, and we have a responsibility to all the kids. We have West Side kids and East Side kids. Some kids don't even have money for all the food they need at the end of the month. We even have homeless families in our district that we must care for. Yes, we will have to honor the 2% cap.
Thank you. We're going to begin with the dollars, I see.
This sounds good coming from a millionaire, guys, but all of us who live in Hoboken are not millionaires. Okay, number one. And number two, when you say think about all the kids, think about all the kids. I don't want to hear the word audit no more, because when somebody order you, they still got to take the stats from our administrator to say, I brought this, I brought two cookies, I brought three tablets. You still, somebody is still writing that down for the audit. If you're a liar, you could put anything and say your numbers is this, the stats is this. So, keep that in mind, too.
The duty of a BOE trustee is to represent the taxpayers, but to advocate for the students of the district. Pavel has talked a lot about making sure that taxes are as low as possible for Hoboken residents. However, he actively supported a gubernatorial candidate that advocated for drastically reducing state aid specifically to school districts like Hoboken, which would have significantly increased local property taxes. I think that's important to know.
I just want to say, yes, we can raise taxes by more than 2% without a referendum. And we can do that via enrollment and healthcare waivers, just like we did in 1920 by 5.4% and in 2021 by 10%.
The relationship between the charter schools and public schools has been fractured in recent memory. While the public schools aren't expected to fund the charters or vice versa, do you have any plans to try to collaborate them during your three-year term of elected?
Full disclosure, my kids do go to a charter school, so I am obviously supportive of charter schools. But as a BOE trustee, my number one goal would be to make our public, our BOE schools the best they could be, because I see our array of schools like a shopping mall. We want the best anchor store possible. That's our BOE schools. But there's also room in the mall for all the other stores, which are all our other educational options. How lucky are we that we have so many choices here? And of course, let's collaborate as much as possible. Let's have a one Hoboken mindset. It comes from the top down.
We had a meet and greet with the charter school. A shout out to all of you parents that showed up. I give all of you big respect. And all of my opponents there at the meet and greet talked about inclusiveness and diversity. All of them spoke about, and now today, they do anything to get anybody's attention to get a vote. They made a vow to the charter school, and now today, everybody, public school and anti-charter school. Listen, we shouldn't even be there with the charter school versus the public school. The charter school is a public school. They deserve the same respect and the same duty-free education like the public school. They got the charter school fighting the public school, and all of this animosity going on in our city is disgusting. Our kids still going to be impacted at the end of the day when they go to the park, when they're shopping with their parents and shop, right? So, I'm really sick and tired of all of the stuff with the charter school versus the public school, and the fighting, and the no diversity inclusion, and everybody paying place to blame. Put your money where your mouth is.
If elected, me and my slate mates pledge to do three things. Because the charter schools are part of the fabric of our community, we will never vote to revoke or not renew the charter of an existing Hoboken charter school. School funding in New Jersey is complicated and insufficient. If people want to go to Trenton to get more money for all public schools, we will be there with you. And third, Hoboken has undergone an incredible amount of redevelopment. If you want to lobby the city to ensure there's proper space allocation and taxation for public infrastructure like school facilities of any kind in an upcoming redevelopment plan, we'll be there with you, shoulder to shoulder.
We are lucky that as parents, we have so many choices when it comes to the education of our children. We have all selected schools that fit our needs and desires as families. I in no way plan to decrease those choices for anyone. We live in a community where our children interact with each other in a variety of ways outside of school and have formed friendships through those pursuits. As a parent, as a trustee, and as a taxpayer, I look forward to working together with the charters and collaborating wherever possible for the benefit of all our children. We all know that education in our state is woefully underfunded, and I look forward to working with any charter school to lobby our state officials for more funding.
We would never move to have an opinion to revoke any charter of an existing charter school. They are chartering about a third of our children in this district, and we're absolutely right. We need them.
All right, folks, we have one more segment highlighting the Hoboken Board of Education debate. You're not going to want to miss it. We will be right back. Peter Biancamano, back with you. Don't forget to watch us on cable access every Sunday and Monday at 9:00 a.m., Optimum Channel 18, Files Channel 46, and Comcast Channel 190. Also, on Sunday mornings at 9:30 a.m., you can watch our show on our YouTube channel, and you can also binge-watch all of our old shows. Who doesn't want to keep watching The Pulse with Peter B.? We'll see you there. Today's show is brought to you by Leadership That Listens. For knowledgeable leadership that listens to move our schools and community forward, vote 2i, 3i, 4i on November 8th. Norwood, Grania, and De La Torre for Hoboken's Board of Education.
What, if any, is your political affiliation? And how does that influence your point of view on the Board of Education?
I, too, am unaffiliated. I think party affiliation has zero place in a Board of Ed race. We all received sample ballots in the mail. There was no R or D next to any of our names. That's because party affiliation has nothing to do with Board of Ed race. What I do believe is that our country and this town is horrifyingly divided on the national and local level. We need to have open, honest, and respectful public discourse. People are allowed to have different opinions. People can live in harmony regardless. Everyone should vote for people over party.
First of all, I'm not a political person. I'm a people person. And second of all, I want you guys to wake up. I'm going to keep saying this. Lawyers and liars is not who we need on our Board of Education.
I am a lifelong Democrat, but I've never served in a committee leadership role or been a politician. The New Jersey School Board Association is clear that school boards need to be nonpartisan, and we're not bringing culture wars to schools. We have to focus on the needs of schools and the students. We believe it's about values. We believe in science. I'm not a doctor. I listen to doctors and public health officials. I applaud Dr. Johnson for being a leader that allowed parents' options during the pandemic to allow our students to be in person more than any other district in New Jersey. She was really a visionary and did an excellent job in following state and public health standards to ensure our students, teachers, and staff could be in school as safely as possible. I believe in diversity and inclusion. I believe these are principles that are important to teach our children at a very young age. I believe in health standards and following the law of the state of New Jersey.
I myself am a Republican, probably because my parents grew up under communist rule. That being said, I distinctly remember going to Trenton and Washington as Rutgers Student Body President to bring back money for higher education and low-income students. I distinctly remember passing legislation to help trans and LGBTQ youth be more accepted at Rutgers University. I distinctly remember during the referendum advocating for education, voter transparency, fighting against voter suppression tactics, longer runways, things that Democrats claim that they're all about, they threw it out for their own political gain. I had to educate people what it means to be an involved voter.
We started this campaign with an absolute foundation in transparency. We set up our website weeks ago and made very clear what our platform was, what our planks are, and what we would stand for. We have gone to every press interview that has been requested of us. We have responded to every press request. We have not heard anything about these issues from the other side. We are still waiting.
In terms of this being a nonpartisan election, I'm proud to say I've got two Brant moms running our campaign, Megan Dodd and Tammy Pang. We are a community-based effort to try to make sure that we have representation on Board of Education. I was disappointed to see that Mr. Sokoloff has not resigned his position as Secretary of the Republican Party of Hoboken, and his campaign manager is the Chair of the Republican Party in Hoboken. I believe that that position of Secretary needs to be resigned.
What would you say to Hoboken Board of Education employees on the fence about who they vote for and why should they vote for you?
So, I think, as I stated, you know, my experience has been, since my daughter started in the public schools, is to engage. I mentioned that I was an officer in two PTOs. That is about community building. That is about bringing teachers, administrators, and parents into building better schools and stronger schools. Extremely proud of the work that we did at Connors Elementary, where we had a very established, multi-generational set of families and new families coming in and bridging the gap. I also mentioned that I have served on the city zoning board for eight years. This is why it's important. What we are doing here when we are elected, if we are elected, is we have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers. That means understanding the application of state laws in our community. I have over eight years of experience in the space. I hope you'll vote for me.
I have experienced firsthand, as a parent here in the district, the effort, the care, and the professionalism of those working in the public school district. They have not wavered from their commitment or their dedication. And I am here to tell you that I would love to continue supporting you and working together to continue that progress.
Rutgers has a proud history of our five-year Masters in Education program. So many of my classmates and friends have gone through it and become public school teachers. And hearing firsthand from them, the challenges they face, the needs they need, I want to say that we should spare no expense when it comes to supporting our teachers. We have qualified professional teachers who know how to teach. It is not the Board of Ed's job to try to mingle with that. Instead, we're there to be the wind beneath your wings. If you need office supplies, you need to have them funded. Make sure that your salaries are funded appropriately, making sure that you never have to worry about your personal circumstances when you come to teach our kids. We want to be there to support you and give you anything you need to be effective in your job, whether it's professional development or any other benefit we can provide. We are here for you.
I care about teachers. I'm so appreciative of what they do. Their job is not easy. They are professionals. They have to multitask and work with our kids, which we love, but kids can be challenging. So, I have nothing but respect for them, and I want to make sure they get all the support and all the resources we need, they need. Not just teachers, but everybody in the BOE who's working towards the goal of making sure that our kids are prepared for an independent future. Of course, we support them. And one thing I can offer is a mind that comes for creative solutions. Again, if they're having challenges, if they're having issues, let's talk about it. How can we solve things in a way we might not have thought of before? We are here to support you. I would be there to support you. I appreciate so much that you come to work every day and are there to educate our children.
I went to an excellent public school, one of the best in the state. I have nothing but appreciation for public education. That's exactly why I was so excited when my son started kindergarten at Brant. All I want, my whole reason for running, is to support and champion excellent educational outcomes for our students. I support our teachers wholeheartedly. We do not need a fixed mindset. We need flexibility. We need to engage our community. We need to bring people back together.
I just want to add, there's a lot of talk about loving teachers and so forth. I just want to add that our slate has children in the district schools from kindergarten, excuse me, from elementary school all the way from high school. That is because we are delighted with our teachers and our administrators. We love you, and we trust you with our children, and for that, we thank you.
Well, this is a topic that we haven't really discussed here, so I was glad that an audience member brought up athletic programs. And your answer could be none, you're content with it. But what should be done to improve the athletic programs?
I think it's twofold. I agree, there is a facilities need when it comes to athletics, which is why, like I said, I was so disappointed with the way the rollout of the referendum happened. We had an opportunity to really make something great together as a community, but decisions were made that did not allow the community. At the same time, I think we should always consider, you know, funding more coaching, more development, more resources towards athletics. I remember during the referendum, reading an article from a student who said that they didn't have even enough money to fix the volleyball nets or get athletic gear for the soccer team, which I found just unbelievable. But that was the case on the ground. We need to make sure that our resources are going towards athletics, because, you know, a big part of the educational experience is the extracurriculars, and athletics is something I personally hold dear in my heart.
I think we should keep offering the athletic opportunities we have and try to expand them as much as possible. Find out ways we can partner with the city or with other surrounding cities to give us some more use of their facilities, if that's feasible. Another thing we can do is just have more spirit around our athletics in the town, promote what we have, promote gear, promote stuff that in one Hoboken, everybody is cheering for all our teams. And on Friday nights, all our city is over at the games.
With a millionaire's mindset, no, we don't need big hockey rinks and all of that. We do have facilities. We need to be able to utilize them. Like I simply said, I asked them many a times to open up the gyms at night so our kids could play basketball, simple stuff like that. We do have shared services with Stevens Institute. So, Mr. Torrey, when you want to go buy an extra swimming lane, take your kids down to Stevens Institute. I think looking to share services with Union City, Brian Stack would be more than happy. We Hawkins, we could do shared services to bring more and open up our own facilities, too, so our kids can use it for athletics.
My daughter has found three things she loves in the school. She loves choir, she loves band, and she loves swimming. And that swimming component, like Alex mentioned, sometimes falls out of the traditional things that we invest in, like the big three, basketball, historically, baseball, football. We don't have all the facilities to give the opportunities that would allow other kids that have interest in these other sports the ability to participate. Unfortunately, it's going to come back to facilities. Thank you.
All right, folks, I hope you enjoyed our highlight reel of the 2022 Hoboken Board of Education election debate. Do not forget to vote this upcoming Tuesday, November 8th. Polls are open from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. We again want to thank our sponsors for helping us put this on, and they are Il Tavolo di Palazzano, located at 700 Clinton Streets, Madison Pizza Lab, located at 152 Newark Streets, and Placa Su Vlaki, located at 62 Newark Streets. You're going to want to get over there. You're going to want to go to all of those great eateries. And I'm Peter Biancamano. Join us next week for The Pulse on everything you need to know. Have a great week, everybody. Have a great week, everybody.